It is June 5th, 2018 at 6:32 PM. We're here for a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please all rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
McKinney, absent, Polikas?
Here.
Shumway?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Stoner?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Somerville?
Here.
That's eight present and zero, or one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have a couple of proclamations for this evening. So the first one is about Mosquito Awareness Week. So whereas in 1972, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Start over. That's the, uh, that's for trees. Whereas, the American Mosquito Control Association is an international organization dedicated to providing leadership, information, and education, leading to the enhancement of public health and quality of life through the suppression of mosquitoes. And whereas, the American Mosquito Control Association is dedicated to preserving the public's health and well-being through the use of safe, environmentally sound mosquito control programs since 1935. And whereas, the city of Laramie, in cooperation with the Albany County Weed and Pest Board, has been involved in mosquito control activities since 1976. And whereas, the mosquito control section of the Parks and Recreation Department treats approximately 70,000 acres of rural and urban property in a 12-mile radius around Laramie. And whereas, the mosquito control program follows an integrated pest management approach that includes control methods by the most economical means with the least possible pesticide exposure to people, property, and the environment. And whereas, the city of Laramie has an approved West Nile virus plant to detect and reduce the risk of human infection associated with the West Nile virus. And whereas, due to the efforts of the mosquito control program, the quality of outdoor summer activities in Laramie is improved, along with reducing the risk of mosquito-borne illness. Now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the week of June 24th through June 30th, 2018, as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. For the city of Laramie, Wyoming, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing mosquito control services and to recognize the contributions which mosquito control personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So with that, I would like to invite our new mosquito control supervisor, Tyler Shelving, up to the podium and also recognize if all of the mosquito control personnel could stand up so we can recognize you. Thank you very much for your work. Yeah, I know you guys started last night.
(applause). Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'll just give you guys a quick update where we're at with the season. Our larval control operations, they started about early April, so we've been full swing with those for a solid two months now. So we had our first larval aerial, um, it would have been the 26th of May. We treated approximately about 3,000 acres outside of town. And we have another one scheduled for 4:00 AM tomorrow morning where we're going to treat a similar about 3,000 acres. Like, uh, like you said, our night crew started, was our first night, was Monday night. We hit our threshold under traps in the west area of town. We haven't quite got there in our south and north, but west got pretty hit, hit pretty hard over the weekend. So we initiated our night crew this week. They were able to fog most of west, and we have a little bit to finish up tonight, and we'll start in with the parks, green belt, and athletic fields. And we'll keep monitoring traps. We did test our first pool of Culex tarsalis for West Nile virus last week. It came back negative, and we'll test again this Thursday. Right now, we're still seeing just overwintered ones, so we're not seeing any new, new species, new Culex for the year. So they'll slowly be rolling in probably towards the end of June, and our testing will pick up from there.
Sounds good. Well, again, thank you very much for everything you guys do and for all the hard work that you do over the summer, keeping us, you know, mostly nuisance-free, as well, as, as we can't underscore enough, the health, uh, the health benefits that you guys contribute to. So we appreciate your hard work.
Okay, thank you. (applause).
All right, and now for the trees. This is for the Arbor Day celebration. So whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, the planting of trees is a vital step in developing civic pride and a sense of community. And whereas, trees provide an abundance of environmental and aesthetic advantages to citizens and wildlife wherever they are found. And whereas, the state of Wyoming has designated the last Monday in April as the state Arbor Day, and all communities in Wyoming can designate their own Arbor Day based upon climatic conditions of the community, which for us means just slightly later than the rest of the world, right? Whereas, the governing body for the city of Laramie desires to participate in the annual celebration of Arbor Day. And whereas, the city of Laramie has celebrated Arbor Day and the annual community tree sale beginning in 1984, and this year, 2018, will be the 35th anniversary. And whereas, in addition to the 70 trees that will be available for sale at the wholesale cost, one per Laramie household, to promote our urban forest, a tree planting demonstration will be conducted in the ICE and Events Center parking lot landscape. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim June 9th, 2018, as Laramie's Arbor Day. We urge residents of Laramie on this day to plant trees and to support our city's community forestry program. So we, I believe we have our arborist and Scott Hunter here. Who would like to come forward?
Lady.
(laughing) All right. Mr. Overstreet, and the podium is yours.
Make sure you tell people what time they need to be there if they hope to have a tree.
Honorable Mayor, Council members, um, a lot of people line up early. This is upcoming Saturday for the tree sale, and, uh, we're gonna probably open the gate or the doors, the front doors to ICE Center at, uh, 7 o'clock. They'll be allowed to go in and mingle in the concession area, and then they also go in there and look at the trees, but they're not, they don't have access to the trees, but they'll be able to look at them. We'll give people numbers as, for their place in line, so the first come will be first served, um, to, to the trees. And we're, we have, hopefully, 70 this year. There's a few trees that didn't make the, um, the shipping, uh, so (laugh) they had to be weeded out a little bit. But I, please come, um, between 7, as early, uh, close to 7:00 as possible, and you can probably get a tree.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for all the beautification, and we hope everybody gets out and plants some more trees because we love them, so, thank you, Randy. (applause). All yours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is gonna be announcements. Actually, City Manager, do we have any announcements this evening?
Your Honor, we have none.
All right, fair enough. Um, I have two, hopefully, quick ones. Uh, the first is a reminder that this Saturday, uh, from, I believe it's 8:30 to 5:00, um, we are having, we are hosting the Endow Engage Session. So for people, uh, it's targeted to try to bring people in that are under 35 years of age to have conversations about Wyoming's future and diversification and what areas we want to concentrate in and what Wyoming needs. So we are trying to promote that event a little bit and try to get some people to come down and talk to the Endow Council. It's very important to get the upcoming generation's opinion on what should, we should be doing. Uh, and so the second announcement I have is our 150th birthday ordinance reading. So this is, uh, it looks like an ordinance from the 1889, um, and it's related to public scales, which is something historically was very, very important. For today, not so much. Um, but it read that all coal, hay, lime, vegetable, or other commodities commonly sold, uh, will be measured and valued by the scale within the city of Laramie. The scales will be situated in front of Lot 22 in Block 200 on Second Street, known as the Co-op Scales. The mayor, with the consent and confirmation of the council, shall appoint a weighmaster whose duty will be to repair it at his own expense. That's interesting. Uh, to, and superintendent care for said scales to regulate and adjust the same according to the standard of weights established by Congress to truly weigh the articles. Um, let's see, it goes on to, to just talk, oh, here we go. The salary of the weighmaster shall be $1 per year, able annually. And he has to fix the scale himself.
At his cost.
But, uh, I don't know about that, so.
I'm sure he has a side business.
(laughing) We, we can only guess. We can only guess.
He gets everything that falls off the scales.
(laughing). All right, so we'll go on item number five, disclosures by City Council members. Anybody have any disclosures this evening? Okay, moving on to item number six, there are no changes. Vice Mayor.
Right, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. Second by Counselor Stoner. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes, except on item 8G, I will abstain.
Okay.
G as in George?
George, yes.
McKinney, absent, Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes, on everything except 8G, and I vote no.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Um, yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, two with an exception on 8G, one absent, Your Honor.
All right, that motion carries. Move on to the regular agenda. Counselor Shumway, item 10, please.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I move to award the bid for the Mitchell Street Waterline Replacement Project to Six Point Solutions LLC, Laramie, Wyoming, in the amount of $667,616.42, along with contingency of $66,761.64, for a total amount of $734,378.6, to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City Engineer Japp, welcome.
Thank you. You're all my mayor members and council. The bid award in front of you tonight is a water main replacement project in Mitchell Street. It's between 15th and 18th Street. The project will upgrade approximately 1,340 feet of cast-iron pipe to new PVC pipe. In addition, the project will install an underdrain pipe and HDPE storm sewer. The storm sewer is needed to address the high groundwater in the area, and the nearest storm sewer is in Reynolds Street, so the line will run in Mitchell and then along 15th to connect into that Reynolds line. Uh, there will be some minor sanitary work as part of this job as well. Uh, the city received two bids for this project, and Six Point Solutions was the low bid. It is staff's recommendation to award the contract to Six Point Solutions. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Questions for city staff. Counselor Schuster.
Uh, will we be closing 15th for that, or will we have half open still, or anything?
Uh, Your Honor, Mayor, Counselor Schuster, um, that's yet to be determined. We're gonna have to work with the contractor. Um, we're going about halfway in the street, so our hope is to try to keep it open, but definitely can't guarantee that if it does shut down. Hopefully, it will only be for a handful of days.
I know we'll just have to eliminate parking on one side. I know, Trent, so I'll go and pick on it.
Any other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just to observe the urgency of this, I figured 1,340 feet, and the statement says there have been about 15 breaks in the last memorable years. That's one break every 100 feet. So that's probably something that ought to be fixed fairly soon.[806.23][806.23](laugh) Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public on this project, on this item? Okay, seeing done, any discussion from council on this item? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney, absent, Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 11. Counselor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I move to postpone the sea line sewer project until next year. Move fund to FY '19, FY '20, and direct staff to explore drainage and full street construction, ribbon paving, and walkability features with the project, and prepare a report back to council after August 21st, 2018.
Do we have to introduce it before we postpone it? Second.
Do we have second? Second from Counselor Hanson.
The question is, I think we have to introduce it and then go to postponement.
Well, this, this is just a budget amendment.
Okay.
Um, just like we did, we, it's just a, a week late because we needed more stuff with staff time, so. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Um, this amendment spawned from a few of the Ward 1 representatives, kind of looking at, um, this street project and recognizing that we were going to be tearing up the entire thing anyway to put new sewer in, um, and trying to explore how we can think about that more holistically and potentially have cost savings in the long run by potentially ribbon paving or paving the street in conjunction with doing that project, rather than tearing the street up, putting new sewer in, and then a few years later, going back and paving the street. That's my synopsis.
Sounds good. I will add a few comments to this as a Ward 1 representative. First of all, I want to thank the city staff for all the work that they've put in, trying to come up with possibilities that might work for this. As you can see, there's a second motion on the, on the sheet, which was originally what we were thinking about bringing, was trying to wait to find, to fund the drainage improvements and street construction with this project, so that, as Counselor Stoner said, we were doing it more holistically, hopefully saving money in the long term, and addressing some critical corridors in the business district up on North Second Street that are in desperate need of street improvements and drainage improvements up there. Um, with, in the numerous conversations that we had with city staff over what the possibilities could be, frankly, it is a very big conversation. And as you can see from the Second Amendment, um, we priced out the improvements to be about, just over a million dollars, I think 1.1 million, somewhere in that neighborhood, to do full construction with the drainage that is necessary to address that area and adding sidewalks. This is a $2.2 million sea line water project, or sea line project, sewer project right now, and so the, it is a large expense to do all of it, but it will cost us more money, as Counselor Stoner said, to go back and do this in the end. So I also agree with the idea that hopefully, to bring this up, to have the conversation about, for this project, I wish this project was coming up after we had had our work sessions on streets that we're gonna have this summer, because I think this is exactly what we want to talk about, is we're already gonna be there, how do we maximize our dollars and stretch them as far as we can to do the projects that we need to be doing, instead of just doing the exact same thing we've been doing for 20 years, which is this narrow, focused, we can only afford this, so we're not gonna touch anything else. So that's, that was my hope, I think, and I know Counselor McKinney is not here, but that was his hope as well, is that we would start to look a little broader and start to address these issues. So it's our intention just to postpone it, as to oppose to appropriating the money, which would have to come from two different projects, um, right now, but take any questions from council members. Counselor Hanson?
Just the observation, since B is not on the floor, just to inform the public that the two items that were gonna be stripped out there are supposed to go ahead at this point, uh, so they are not canceled as it would have been if B would have been voted on.
That is correct. Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Any questions from council members? Vice Mayor?
So this might very well be directed more towards, uh, city staff, if that's all right?
Yes, please.
So if we are to postpone this project, even a year, basically, can you give me kind of a bullet-pointed synopsis of what happens?
Uh, Your Honor, the mayor and council member Pierce, uh, essentially, it sets off this chain reaction or domino effect where we have to delay multiple other projects. So even if we may have some design in there, it's gonna certainly delay the construction of those projects. We have some issues in this particular sewer trunk main where we have parallel lines, we have larger lines flowing into smaller lines, and those are all in conflict with DEQ regulations. So this project is one of a multi-phase, uh, effort to replace that entire line. It started actually at the lift station along the river north of town, and all of that line up to this point has been replaced. This is the next phase, and as I mentioned, it, it goes south on Second Street for two blocks, and then it goes east and, uh, over to Fourth, and then it continues south. So it zigzags, eventually ending up clear over near Sixth and Iverson. So all of those projects are depending on us completing these downstream improvements. But my opinion honestly is, I think we should go ahead and complete the sewer project, bid it for construction, hire Tri-Hydro to do the design of the street improvements, and then we could change order of the street improvements into the sanitary sewer contract at a later date. I think that's the most expeditious way of doing it. We're not gonna get around to building the street this summer anyway. We're just not gonna have enough time. We have too short of a construction season. It's probably gonna be next spring anyway. So that's what I would recommend we do.
And, so with this postponement, can we do that? I mean, is that in effect what we would be doing with the postponement, or no?
If we're postponing the project, then we're gonna, you know, what I would suggest, let's finish the design, 'cause we're at 90 or 95%, and then we'll just stop work on it. That's, that's what that means to me.
Counselor Polikas and then Stoner?
So if I interpret this correctly, the hang-up of fixing that sewer line is the fact that we're, we're, let me ask a question first off. The pavement, the paving of the street and the sidewalks of the street, are there any, um, landowner, property owner contributions to this project for that street and for that sidewalks?
Your Honor, the mayor, council member Polikas, no, there is, there are no private landowner contributions associated with the project.
the pavement of this street is gonna be in gratuity to all those homeowners that now have a gravel street. Is that, is that, I, I guess I'm bothered by the fact that it looks to me like we're holding up a sewer project, um, because of the fact that we want to see, we want to see the streets paved, and yet we have no discussion with the homeowners or the ones that are gonna benefit from that pavement and the sidewalks. We've had no discussion with them as to their contributions. Is this, and I'm, I'm concerned about the policy we're setting up for other streets in other parts of our community that may develop the same, same MO, if you will.
Counselor Polikas, um, that's exactly some of the conversations that we had with city staff about this and the timing, and that's why we decided not to bring forward the move to appropriate the money, because one of the issues was, we haven't had the conversations, uh, that need to be held with the people that live on those streets and own businesses on those streets. And the council has not had a conversation about the general policy towards paving and putting in improvements in unpaved areas, and we have two taxes that are up for election, the Sixth Penny and the Fifth Penny. And so it seemed, although the conversation, in my opinion, needs to happen, it seemed premature to go ahead with this before all of those things had happened, which is why we have the postponement motion instead of the appropriating the money motion.
Are we taking comments now, or just getting questions?
I was just trying to answer your question on the, the homeowners.
I, I have a problem with us postponing needed, uh, infrastructure projects because we haven't decided, um, what we're doing on future paving of these streets. I, I don't, I just can't go along with it. I think we need to take care of our infrastructure, and that's a whole separate issue, and that can be done in the, in the future, if in fact, if in fact it does get done.
So, Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I don't know if other folks have this lovely map, but on my version, um, this is for Earl, on my version, there are some very large puddles. I don't know if puddles is the right word, but there are some large bodies of water in this area. There's obviously some drainage problems, and I was just wondering if you could speak to that and how the drainage problems in that ish, area relate to other areas of town, and kind of what the two options would do in addressing those problems.
Your Honor, the mayor, council member Stoner, uh, that area of town, like many others, is pretty flat, so, uh, developing adequate drainage is, is a challenge. You, you can accomplish that either by ribbon paving and roadside ditches. It's a little more difficult to do it with that method, but you could also do it with curb and gutter, obviously, and storm sewer, which is a more expensive option, but it's, requires less maintenance, and, uh, you're, you're gonna be more successful in doing that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and if you could, um, through mayor, if you could, um, speak to how the drainage issues here kind of relate to other places with the actual physical runoff?
Yep. The, well, this is near the river, and it's downstream or down gradient, so anything upstream is gonna flow that direction that isn't, uh, captured in a storm sewer. As part of the new Harney Street overpass project, there are some new storms who are being installed in there, but, um, as we've gone through these master planning efforts, our storm sewer system is woefully inadequate. So you end up trying to flow that water across the surface, and it ends up collecting in these low spots and goes pretty much anywhere. So that's where the challenge is, and it, here and other places that are flat and downgradient from, from the watersheds.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
So, so if we, if we don't vote to postpone, if we say no to the postponement, pieces of this will still go ahead, and you're, and I, I believe I heard you say you're not actually going to get to it this construction season? Is that right?
Your Honor, the mayor, council member Pierce, no, it, we're, we're about finished with the design on the sanitary sewer project, so we have to get a permit from DEQ to construct. At that point, we're ready to bid it for construction. It was our intent to, uh, bring an award of bid to council, uh, this summer and get the project started. And, and I also wanted to point out, any of those streets down there that are now paved and as rough as they might be, we would patch that pavement back as part of the sewer project. That's standard practice. If it's a gravel roadway, then obviously we reshape the road and, and put the gravel crown back in place, but it, it's our intent to bid it for construction this year, which is what I was saying earlier, we wouldn't get around to building the roadway this, this season, because we have to design it first, we have to make sure we address adequate storm drainage. The, the street would not be completed or bid for construction until next spring, under any scenario.
Okay, so, so I'm wondering, I think we're okay. I mean, I think if, if we vote no on this postponement, we will just get the project started, and when it actually comes to the road conversation, the surface conversation, we can have that sometime this summer, or into the fall, or however it works on the calendar, and we're not gonna miss any windows. I don't hear we're gonna be wasting or, you know, putting, because we're, the dirt's already there, right? So we're just gonna move the dirt and put the dirt back, right? We're not gonna be spending 200 crazy thousands of dollars or something on dirt, right?
Right.
And then we can have that holistic conversation that we all want to have related to streets, right? Am I missing, am I missing something here? I mean, I think we're okay to have that conversation and, and get this ball rolling, or no? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I'll, I'll wait till comments. Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm torn between what the mayor and the other counselors in Ward 1 are saying about this and Director Smith, because he's the expert on this, and so when the time comes, I would certainly, uh, hope that maybe the, the counselors in Ward 1 would convince me that Director Smith and your opinion, if you can convince me one way or another, because I'm kinda teetering right now which way to go on this, so I'll just, uh, leave it there.
Any other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Just a question for information. I'm looking at the map. Are there any private home owners down there? Because it looks like all industrial down there.
Uh, Counselor Hanson, there is several trailers on one of the blocks, on the northern two blocks, I believe, of Second Street. Director Smith, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
The northern end. Always.
Oh, Your Honor, the mayor, uh, council member Hanson, uh, there are some residents there, particularly between Second and Third and South and Lion. Uh, I think that block has, has a lot of residential property.
There it is, yep.
And it, they're, they're interspersed here and there, but it's, it's largely commercial and industrial. and industrial, with that exception.
Now, the next question that I have, we do charge commercial and industrial folks too, don't we, for street improvements?
Director Smith, do you want to?
Your Honor, the Mayor and Councilmember Hanson, assuming we're talking about some type of lo, local improvement district, yes, you would assess both commercial, industrial properties as well as residential.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And that is a conversation we haven't had yet.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor McKinney?
Many questions. How long is that street going to last? Fifty years? Sixty?
That's, that's as good a guess as I would have.
Is it in the city?
Yes, yes.
If, if a private individual was tearing up a water in a sewer line and was putting it on, would you not require them to pave and curb and gutter?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember McKinney, we would require them to return it to its original condition. So, if it was ribbon paving, they would have to patch it. If it was gravel, they'd have to restore that surface. We wouldn't require them to put curb, gutter, or sidewalk in.
If you go in there and you tear it up and you take everything off the top, you go in and tear it up, you put ribbon paving, road base, crusher dust for pavement, how much is it going to cost to remove that, to do the, the right way, to do it the right way? Put in curb and gutter and pave, it's going to cost what, two or three hundred thousand dollars to take it out of there?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, so, we'd save two or hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in the beginning if we went ahead and did it anyway. Went to the public and said, hey, can you go do a contribution, or would you be willing to do this percentage? So that our practice would be that we would ask somebody in the public to be able to help out on that and, and not incur another cost to be able to get something else done in the future.
Your Honor, the Mayor and Councilmember McKinney, I don't think anyone's arguing that point. I certainly don't get that from the staff.
I know, but I'm just asking.
What we're, what we're looking for is policy direction from the council. Do you want a full street section? Or do you want ribbon paving? And, and my recommendation is not to hold up the sewer line project.
Which are, are you going to finish? Is it, is it in the paperwork that states that you will go in and pave, curb, and gutter, and put in drainage? Yes or no?
No, it isn't. It's not in the project at this point.
That's where the problem lies, is that you have a piece that's in the city.
Do you have a question for, I'm sorry, I have to keep it to specific questions.
Does this have drainage there at all?
Surface drainage right now.
Just surface drainage, but not?
Not, we're not adding storm, we're not adding storm sewers as part of this project.
Would that benefit the neighborhood if it did have that?
Most certainly.
Bring property values up?
I can't answer that one.
I mean, I'm just.
Counselor McKinney, can I, can I go to the next counselor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Polikas?
Is there anything you're doing with this sewer project that would be money spent that would have to be redone if in fact that street were to be paved or curbed and gutted?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember Polikas, very little, because as I said, the sanitary sewer runs for a two-block section in Second. So, whatever is paved now, we would patch that back, and that's, that's all the restoration we would do.
Okay.
So, you know, whatever amount of patch would be involved with that is, is what would be potentially at risk.
And, did I hear you say that this project is holding up other projects within that area if it does not get done immediately?
That, that's correct. We're, all of the projects upstream are dependent on this one. We have to go in sequence upstream.
Okay. And then the last question I had, and you may not know this, but when, I don't know what it's called now, it used to be called the courthouse, the fitness center down there. When they put an addition on, I thought there was a lot of discussion as far as the delayed improvement agreement on the streets around them at the time. Do you know, I know, maybe, I don't know if you, there we go.
Come on up. Kristina?
Because I, I know that there was discussion of it at the time when they were putting on that addition.
Mayor and council, the, with that addition under your site plan process that's adopted by code, if the footprint or the increased impervious area does not go over two thousand square feet, which they are like twenty feet under, they were not required or triggered into the road improvements. If they would have been past that threshold, or in the future if they do another addition, they will be past that threshold, they'd be required to bring the whole site and all perimeter roads up to full city standards, which today, full city standards are curb, gutter, sidewalk, and asphalt.
So, they're waiting for their free street? To add more square footage. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for city staff? I know there's a lot of discussion to be had, but just questions. Counselor McKinney?
Is there paving on that room? If I remember correctly, the only part is Pat, right in front of Pat's, that little small piece right there, but the rest of it's all dirt. So, there's not going to be anything to patch.
Right, I think that's correct.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, are there any comments from the public on this item? Okay, we'll start with discussion.
Let somebody else go first.
I, I'll, I'll go, I'll, I'll kick it off here, because I just want to address a couple of points. So, one of the things that was brought up is have we talked to the, the landowners? And no, we have not yet because of the timing of this issue. I think that's a conversation we need to have. However, I want to be clear, we haven't charged for this in the past. South Second Street, two years ago, received a lot of work, and they got free asphalt. They got free paving down there, just two years ago, from a, from, for a variety of reasons and contract issues and all kinds of other things, but they got free pavement. When we paved around Linford, the homeowners across the street did not get charged. Albany County School District partnered with us, but we did not ask the homeowners for money. We did not ask for the homeowners for money when we paved one block off of Snowy Range. So, although I agree the conversation needs to be had, I want to make sure that everybody is on the same understanding that we have not asked people to contribute. Now, whether we want to or not is a totally different discussion, but we have not to date. My concern with, with, and my reason for wanting to delay the project is not to delay the sewer projects as they're going. My hope is that if we can make this decision after August, that we can, you know, design the next phases and, and make some ground up in the following construction season. But I am concerned about the lost cost savings between the, I've spent a lot of time talking with engineering about materials and how much has to come in and how, how much has to go out, and there will be lost money if we do just the sewer project right now and then go back and do the design. We're going to have to repay all the mow fees again for the contractor and whatever else to rip stuff out and redo it. It may only be a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. And my disappointment here is that I think we should have been having this conversation a year ago or two years ago before the Seeline project even ever made it on to the main budget year. This conversation should have been had a long time ago about how we want to approach this project, given the scope of its project and the needs that are in that area, but instead, we're so laser focused on, we're just going to go in with the sewer line, we're not talking about the bigger issues, and there are significant issues. As Counselor Stoner pointed out, you can clearly see the lakes, the lakes that are all, that are there year-round with all the drainage issues that are over there. So, I think that, I think I hit all the points. My hope is that you guys will vote to postpone this. I don't think, to be, to be very fair to the city staff, I don't disagree with Director Smith in anything. In the ideal world, we would continue cruising on and we would get the sewer line project done, but we don't have a budget where we can afford to lose a couple hundred thousand dollars. We just don't. We have to do everything as economically and as fiscally tight as we can to get stuff done. So, that's, that's my concern, but I don't disagree with him at all. Director Brown?
Mayor and councilmembers, I did provide that number on the budget motion sheet at the bottom, so if you look at the bottom, and so, what the savings will create is if you're doing the street at the same time, then enterprise would be paying for some of the street. And, so basically, based on engineering estimates, it was a hundred and two thousand in savings for, if you did the, the pavement together with the sewer, sewer line. I guess I will still reiterate that delaying the sewer line, yeah, the general fund, it helps the general fund, but you're also then delaying costs from the enterprise fund also. So, I think it's kind of a, at this point, a kind of even break even, and I'm not saying not to, I think we want to do the, the roadway, but I just wanted to show you it was on there, and it's on the summary sheet that we provided for you, so.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. Back to questions. I hate to say I'm going to pick on you. I told you I wasn't going to throw you under the bus, too. Will a storm sewer pipe be put in at this time when you do the sewer? So that if eventually this goes in, all we have to do is tap into it?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember Schuster, no, sir, that. A storm sewer has not been designed as part of the sanitary sewer project.
Okay, I was curious about that. So, I was going to ask if ribbon paving did come about, if we could still put drainage in to get it out, but that answer would be no.
What, what we would like to do as a, as a staff is actually do some design, because it's, it's always challenging when you have property that's that flat. The river is fairly far away from there. We have a railroad to deal with. It's just, the solutions just aren't straightforward. So, we could speculate all we want on what, what may happen or what may need to happen, but I think until we get some engineering consultants out on the ground and looking around and finding solutions, you know, it's, it's just a guess.
And then one more comment, please.
Sure, please.
When my dad built his grocery store in seventy-eight, yes, he did have to put in the road. Yes, he did have to put in curb and sidewalks and everything. So, yes, businesses do contribute when they're building at that time.
All right. Other discussion, comments? Counselor Polikas?
I just want to reiterate what we've heard from staff, and that is that this project is not reflective upon whether the street gets paved or not. It's something that needs to be done. It's a, you know, the whole decision on streets, the discussion is in, discussion is in July. The vote on the twenty million, twenty-one, twenty or twenty-one million dollars is in, is in mid-August. You're losing your whole construction season. You're, you're into next year. It's not postponing it for a month or something like that. I say get the utilities taken care of, get the underground taken care of, and as far as the mobilization and so forth and so on, it's, it's different equipment for the, for the streets than it, you're using excavators and so forth. I, I don't think the mobilization is that big of a deal. We've heard nothing from staff concerning the two hundred thousand dollars we're going to be losing by doing it this way. If anything, we've heard a recommendation to go the other way, and that's the, that's the preferred direction I'd like to go in. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I have another question for Director Smith. Just want to make sure that I'm on the same page. So, regardless of our decision tonight, it doesn't sound like you'll be breaking ground on the project until next construction year. Is that correct?
No, it's not.
You'll do the sewer this year, and then?
Yes.
Any other discussion on this? Counselor Hanson?
Just to be clear, let us say the vote on A is no. Then we go to B, or we go nowhere? What, what happens then?
Counselor Hanson, that would be up to the motion maker, but my understanding is that I don't think we're going to put B on the floor. I would leave that to Counselor.
I'm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but then we do have the budgeting to get the sewer line done?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. It'll continue as it was presented to us in the budget book.
As it was originally presented. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, I just have a couple, couple comments. You know, I think, I think our, our mayor made some very valid points in terms of, of timing of projects and kind of taking a holistic approach and, and having conversations related to policy and potential plans for sharing costs with businesses or residents and, and the whole gamut of, of things we need to talk about, and, and I really appreciate that. And, and to be very frank, we've been putting off this conversation for at least the amount of time I've been on council, which is, you know, five and a half years now. So, I mean, we have to have this conversation. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that we have to have this. So, I think, I think we're all getting that message, and I think we're finally moving there. We're just kind of stuck a little bit here because, you know, we've got, we've got a few things in the works and, and I think to some extent we need to move forward with them, but please don't, for those who are extremely passionate about this, not that I'm not extremely passionate, but I think I'm just passionate, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I absolutely hear it. I just think we're, we're kind of in a, in a bit of a pickle here with, with this particular project. So, so know that I'm all in when it comes to those discussions going forward, okay?
Any others? Counselor McKinney?
Several things. When's Wydok going to start that?
Third.
Third street?
Twenty.
Are they going to start that this year?
No, twenty, twenty-two, I believe.
Okay, so we have, a gateway coming into town has looked like that for sixty years, and we're not willing to throw some money at it to make it better and do the drainage. It sounds to me like there's a huge problem because it's so flat, we can't lay a pipe in there with a, what is it, inch of drop every ten feet, or whatever it is, to be able to get the drainage out of there. I see us tearing the ground up. I see there's no pavement, so we're not going to, we're not going to patch anything. We're not going to repair anything. We're not going to make it look better. I mean, that is a huge gateway to the city, and I think the city should sit down and take time to be able to figure out how to get that fixed. I think they should take it while they're doing it and put in the extra infrastructure that we have to have, get the curb and gutter done, and get the pavement done, and make it look nice coming into town. I know that we have lots of bad spots there. You have Susie's.
Yeah.
That looks horrible. Can't get rid of that. Nothing we can do about it. But when it comes to the streets, when we're tearing them up, why not put the curb and gutter in the streets back in? I don't understand why there's, I, I get the money part. I get that it's been like that for sixty years. I think it's time to change it. I think we need to do better. I don't think we need to come up with something that, a reason why we can't do it. I think we need to come up with a reason why we can do it. I don't see that we're doing that.
Any other comments or discussion? Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I plan on supporting the amendment. I appreciate that this is kind of an awkward situation with the project before the policy conversation. To me, this is a better option, delaying this for an unfortunate amount of time, but ultimately, I think, a nominal amount of time, having the conversation and then being able to apply what we all collectively think to the project. I think that saving a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars is a big deal, and I think that if we can do that in this case, that's important. And I also think that I am really interested in this amendment of hearing those three or four options of just what those things would look like, staff bringing those options back, and the commitment to that happening in August. So, that's why I am planning to support it, and I would appreciate others to join.
Any other discussion on this? All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Pierce?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's six yeses and three noes, Your Honor.
Motion carries. Onto item number twelve, Counselor Hanson.
Oh, boy.
And now for something lighter.
Okay. I would like to move to approve the cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for partic- for participation in the Bill Nye Avenue and Coorsell Road Project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, on May fifteenth, you first heard this item, and it was a co-op agreement for the surveying, design, construction, everything for Bill Nye from Boulder to Fifteenth. At that meeting, there was a considerable discussion about how much of the property or the project was in Albany County versus within the city limits. That led to council postponing this item, asking staff to pursue three items. One is a survey-only option, which is what we've brought before you tonight, pursue a cost-share agreement with Albany County, and then obtain consent affirmation of the project from Albany County. As I said, we've been successful in negotiating a survey-only option, which is what we've presented here. We have not had an opportunity to discuss the other two items with the county. We have, in the past couple of weeks, had a number of conversations with landowners along the corridor who are in Albany County, outside the city limits, and we are receiving considerable favor toward annexing those properties and certainly confirmation or affirmation that the project is supported by the landowners. So with that, it's a pretty straightforward agreement. It's survey-only. The cost is about ninety-four thousand dollars while within the available budget. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Smith on this. Counsel Hanson?
Just one question for Director Smith is, the third point, of course, was obtain consent affirmation, affirmation for the project from this Albany County. Not having that, could that conceivably mean that if they do the surveying only, that that would be invalid if the county says no to it?
Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and Councilmember Hanson, there's certainly that possibility. This project was approved by USAC, which has Albany County members on it, and according to YDOT, they feel that the city of Laramie has ultimate authority on moving this project forward. So I feel pretty confident that we have very low risk. And obviously, YDOT, if they were, felt like there was any risk at all, they wouldn't be proposing this project.
Counsel Hanson, does that answer your question?
Yeah. It is a good question, good answer. I hope it is. I'm coming back to our jurisdictional issues in the county and what the legislature does to us in this respect. So your word and God's ear. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel McKinney?
The cost-share agreement with Albany County, that is for the property that's in Albany County?
Yes, sir.
If we annex them into the city, do we have time to annex them into the city?
Yes.
And so that might be to where Nolan voided the?
That issue. That would correct.
That issue with the county.
Any other questions? Counsel Polikas?
Along with that survey, right-of-way securments and verifications are part of the survey.
Your Honor, the mayor and Councilmember Polikas, that is part of, the actual scope is detailed in the agreement, but it's going to focus on surveying, land surveying, and once you do that, you naturally, you're doing, leading up to some of those other things. But what we directed or asked YDOT to do was present a survey-only cooperative.
Okay. So it does not include the right-of-ways?
Right. Right-of-way acquisition is not included.
Acquisition or verifications.
Yes.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? All right. Any discussion from council on this item? Counsel Schuster?
Thank you. Since it was a statement and not a question, I would go on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for waiting.
This is so desperately needed. If you look at the map, this gets people out of the high school. When we talked about safety, it, I went and took an afternoon off and set it high school dismissal time on Garfield. And I wish I had a badge at that time. Could have made a bunch of money on feeders and stuff like that. Now, I desperately, we desperately need these two more exits out of high school, but I think the neighborhoods are going to be really, really angry at us, the two that exits that it provides for students to shoot out of high school again. I mean, the concept is great, but we do need some traffic enforcement. I am sorry to tell a kid that he's speeding or he needs to pay that ticket, but he's got to learn somehow before he does kill himself or someone else. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Counsel Shumway?
I'm going to support this because it's so desperately needed, but I still have not heard whether or not we are violating the agreement that came from the state legislature on not being involved in planning or construction within the county. I know that there's, you know, we're just talking about design right now. We haven't done anything to move dirt or any of that, but somewhere down the road, we're going to have to complete the annexation, or we're going to have to have an agreement with the county, not so much that they're going to pay for it, because I don't think that's in their interest, or that's not what they're interested in. But we have to be compliant by the way that we treat the bills that come from the state that we are supposed to obey. And right now, we're, I think we're stepping into some areas that we may not have full authority to do that, because House Bill fourteen and House Bill eighty-five said that we have limited ability to do planning and construction within the county, and that it can be vetoed by the county. So I, I hope, and my sense is this, by being on the Urban Systems Committee, that they are not opposed to this going forward. They just don't want to participate in the cost. So I am, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but just as soon as I hear from the county that we've overstepped our bounds, I'm going to backtrack, because I don't want to step on toes like we've done in the past.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
So I will add just a few, thank you again to the staff for the quick turnaround with YDOT on the survey-only agreement. I think that this allows us to move forward with the surveying, so we're not delaying that project, which is what we were concerned about. So I very much appreciate that. I know the answers to these other questions, including the jurisdiction question, the conversations with the county are still forthcoming. So we appreciate that. All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number thirteen, Counsel Stoner.
Yes. Oh, I had it all pulled up. I move to approve the cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-five for participation in the Third Street median project, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabriel. Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, this is a co-op agreement very similar to the previous agenda item. This will allow the construction of medians in Third Street at Kearney and at Clark Street. These, these projects, well, and let me mention, there's also some other miscellaneous ADA improvements and so forth. This will be done in conjunction with YDOT's project of overlaying Third from Curtis to Boswell. So it'll all be incorporated in that one project. Because these aren't specifically related to the overlay project or ADA improvements, that's why the city is entering into this co-op agreement to pay for those medians. And I'll also say that these, this design that's included in this co-op agreement is the result of a lot of effort by a lot of people, YDOT, Main Street folks, and staff. I haven't been as involved with that as some other staff members, so Derek Teeny and Eric Japp are here. They can talk to you about some of the process and how we came to this conclusion, but I was hoping Trey was going to be here, because she's been very instrumental in moving this project forward, talking to businesses, and working with everyone. So with that, if you have more questions, we'd be glad to answer those, but staff recommends approval.
Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I presume these median barriers or whatever have the same function that they do on Grand Avenue, namely avoiding or preventing left turns. Isn't that the purpose of them? And so it's done in two segments, sections here. And I think we're going ahead with what I object to. I think we're making this street more and more of a through street that people whiz through, and I think it is, by all intents and purposes, because of what's on the side, a business street where businesses are located. And, you know, having two lanes of traffic in each direction, no turning lanes possible, people will whiz through, but it doesn't, is not conducive to stopping and shopping in this area. The other thing that I object to is we're in an age where we promote bicycle rides. There are no bicycle lanes on it. Still, I keep on asking about that, and at least on one side, not on either side. So it is, I think the design is very nice. I like it, but it defeats the purpose of creating a business-oriented street where people would shop and buy stuff. So I think the business, businesses on the side of that street are not being served at all by this design. Very nice design, but in the wrong place. Thank you.
Come on up.
I kind of have a comment like him, but I know we're not in comments. He kind of did a comment during the question session.
Okay. We're only in questions right now. I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Japp, so he can explain a little bit about the process and the reason for the medians, and anything else you'd like to add.
Okay. Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, the medians you see here are more for an entryway was what the purpose of these are. They are prohibiting left-hand turns. You know, when we originally started the design, the plan wasn't necessary to prohibit the left-hand turns. As we started getting into design, we started talking about site triangle distance and what the Main Street, the downtown, and others were wanting to see inside of those medians. And when we were doing the site triangle analysis, you're limited to the height you can put inside medians. So when we, the decision was made at that time by extending the medians, which therefore does eliminate that left-hand turn, you are able to put taller items, or basically, you know, within reason, but you could put, you know, a tree or something that it would be obstructing in that site triangle. So that is how we came to this. You know, you are correct, and it is like how Grand Avenue is, it's going to be eliminating those turns. However, the purpose here was not necessarily to eliminate the turns. The purpose was more to get more of an entryway treatment and to have more options. So that is how we came to this design that is being shown here. So it's really, you know, yes, it is going to have those same kind of repercussions as Grand Avenue, but it is to let people know as they're entering into the Third Street that you are entering into a different area. You're not, you know, this is more of a commercial, to try to attract people to that area. So that is the purpose of these medians. There is going to be more items, you know, some more decorative items, those have yet to be determined on how, what will be placed in there, but that will be done, that. As far as the rest of Third Street, there is quite a bit more design than what you're seeing here. YDOT has a whole rest of the design that's coming forward with that. With that, there's going to be bulb-out treatments. There's going to be eliminated the left-hand turns. There's several different items that were all put, many of the items you guys saw with the three-two-one plan that was presented. And all those items attribute to traffic calming. With that traffic calming, it's not going to be quite the thorough way that you're seeing necessarily on Grand Avenue. There's going to be different items that are going to neck down traffic. What that does is even with speed limits, that slows people down because of just the way that road feels. You have, and so there's going to be traffic calming that is done on Third Street, and that is the intent that YDOT, the city, the downtown group are all trying to achieve with that. So that, does that kind of answer your question a little bit more with that of, this is just a small picture. This is just, you know, the city's portion of what we're attributing to that. There is going to be a big public meeting that YDOT's going to have in the near future. We were kind of working with them, wanting to get this incorporated into it, and then there's going to be a public meeting for all, for council citizens of Laramie, everybody, that YDOT will hold, which these will show, and then you can see the bigger picture of what is happening on Third Street for that.
Can I just ask you? It is four lanes, the whole length of the street?
It will stay four lanes.
And it has no bicycle possibilities?
It will not have a dedicated bicycle lane.
Okay. Those are my great objections. Thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Japp. Vice Mayor?
So when we did the median discussion on Grand Avenue, we, with YDOT, we had a choice of a shorter median and a much taller median. Do, and I, do we know the height of these medians?
Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Pierce, there's several options, and it hasn't been fully discussed. There's been ideas proposed, but it hasn't been fully discussed on exactly what we're going to be placing into those medians. On the closer edges of them, it will have to have shorter items, but more in the middle and everything, it can be taller items.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean the plants or whatever we decide to put in. I mean the actual concrete, stone, how tall are they going to be of the actual median?
At this time, it's going to be the height of curb.
Say that again?
It's going to be just the height of curb. Your standard curb and gutter, about six inches.
That's it?
That is, that is all, that, we're just putting curb. Now, there could be raised concrete that's placed in them, similar to what you're seeing on Grand Avenue. We could have statues placed in them. There could be several different items, but that exact what is going to be placed in them has not been determined at this time.
Okay.
Counsel Gabriel?
I'm down. Thank you. Eric, considering what you told Counselor Hanson about further discussions, because we're talking about 2022 maybe for construction, something like that? Right. Is there any flexibility, because I'm concerned as well about the lack of bicycle lanes? Do you think that might be a possibility, that after some public meetings, that the design could be adjusted for any kind of bike lanes?
Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Gabriel, you know, YDOT is fairly along with this Getting a bike lane into this road and everything would be challenging. You know, that's ultimately going to come down to YDOT's decision, but it would be very challenging to do that. But this is their road, and I can't really speak for YDOT on that.
Mr. Teeny, you look like you want to, come on up.
So either park or a lane?
Mayor and council, you think you know what I want to speak. Weird. Mayor and council, what I'd recommend that you do is take a look at your Parks and Rec master plan. Your Parks and Rec master plan specifically talked about, do we want bicycle lanes on Grand Avenue? And the answer was no. This council, many of you which sit here today, we discussed that, and the reason why we didn't want bicycle lanes on Grand Avenue is we didn't want bicycle lanes on Grand Avenue is, one, we didn't have full control of that. YDOT would have a large play and say in what those lanes looked like, where they connected. Number two, though, you specifically said, we wanted to move them over One Street to Fourth Street to provide a continuous north-south bicycle connect, bicycle lane, so that's a on-street bicycle lane that would run north-south along Fourth Street, and then provide connections east-west into downtown. I don't have the plan in front of me, I believe we chose University as well as Sheridan Street, and then you're going to have just people coming in on the other streets by, by nature of people that are more comfortable riding outside bike lanes versus designated ones. And so that's why you see YDOT not incorporating bike lanes into that greater design that Eric was talking about, not just the snapshot you see here. So if you'd like any more background, I can pull that stuff up and actually give you that if you want.
Thank you very much. Councilor Pliegus?
Um, I have a question. What's the present roadway width of Third Street? That, it's two lanes basically on Third Street as we see it today.
Four lanes.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, pardon me?
Four lanes, two each direction.
Right.
We call it a four-lane street.
Are they 12 feet or wider or narrower?
Yeah, 12, 13, 16 and 13.
Um, the, the lanes of the actual road right now?
Yes.
It says 15 and 16.
Okay.
Between 12 and 16.
Depends which street you're on, because one of them says 15, one of them says 16, so.
Yeah.
Yep, you're talking Third Street on one end, it's 29, 29, so that'd be 58, and the other street is-
It's greater, it's 12 feet or greater, I would assume.
It's down to a length.
That is correct, but, uh, your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Pliegus, that's correct.
Where I'm going with this is, I know, I know there's highway designs, there are street designs and so forth and so on, when, when you're talking arterials, your preferred minimum standard would be 12 feet, I would assume?
It's not.
Um, the next question I have is, we did put a median in, like this on Grand Avenue, what's the width of the, I, they feel like 12 feet to me, or greater, are they?
I, I do not have the, the widths of Grand Avenue right off the top of my head.
Where I'm going with all this is, we have a few places on Grand Avenue where we allow parking, and we have a standard that's less than 12 feet in those areas, they've kind of squeezed it in, and those are places that I end up driving, like, on the, on the dotted line, if you will, because I'm scared of being, it's just too tight. And when I look at this, it seems like we're going up below a standard, preferred standard, if you will, of roadway width when we put these medians in. I see them as 11 feet on, on my plan.
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Pliegus, that is correct, it is 11 feet. You, you can get by with an 11-foot lane. Part of that is the, the traffic calming, by narrowing up the lanes-
Okay.
-it does cause people to slow down.
And is that comfortable for semis? I mean, isn't a semi eight feet wide? So you're talking one and a half feet on both sides of that semi if they're-
Not including, including the mirrors.
And that doesn't include the mirrors either?
That doesn't, you include the mirrors in there, they're almost 11 feet.
So you're almost taking out pedestrians, if you're not driving real slow.
Flipping me, that's, that was, I was going to-
The whole line of questioning is, 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 is 11 feet a good idea for us to have on an arterial street within our community if we can avoid it?
If your intent is traffic calming, it is.
11 feet is a good way to traffic, slow down traffic?
That is correct.
It's a good idea.
Questions only.
All right. I'm back off.
And I need to, need to also remind council, all we have on the floor right now is a cooperative agreement to help pay for medians. I understand the Third Street discussion is much bigger, but we need to rein this back into the cooperative agreement. Director Smith?
Your Honor, if, if I may-
Please.
Keep, keep in mind that the instigation for this project, these medians, was the 3-2-1 report, which had extensive public input and so forth, so we're simply carrying forward that policy recommendation that was approved by council. So this is exactly what we were directed to do, was develop some entryway treatments in cooperation with the downtown group and YDOT. And addressing some of the traffic engineering questions, you know, YDOT has been extensively involved with this. This isn't, you know, you know, just some ad hoc group of people that are trying to design roadway improvements, it's, you know, YDOT, our engineering staff, our planning staff. There's been a lot of involvement from technical people, and we would recommend this if we didn't feel comfortable with it.
Director Smith, can I also add, since Trey Sherwood is not here for downtown, could you comment a little bit about downtown's participation? And I know the, the budget fiscal note talks about their monetary commitment as well.
I should have mentioned that earlier, the Mayor, Honored. As I said, Trey, Trey has been heavily involved, she's been at every meeting that I've been to, she's super excited about the project, they've been going around getting buy-in from all of the business owners downtown. They've gone so far as raise money to contribute to the project, they've already pledged $30,000 to the project, and they are pursuing up close to $100,000 of additional funding to go towards the project, so, to go towards artwork, landscaping and so forth, so they've, they've really stepped up and been a full participant in, in this project.
And, and I would add, from, as the liaison to downtown, this is their number one priority, and this is very important to the downtown group, so, please.
Mayor and Council, and to add to, to that, remember recently council approved a budget amendment that allowed us to go forward with this design, which we paid half and Main Street paid half, and so that cooperation has continued through all pieces of it, not even just this cooperative agreement that you have today.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Councilor McKinney?
I see on here that you have the bulb-outs on these corners, up here on Kearney, on this, on the map, is that going to be from there extending all the way north to the other center median piece? They're going to do that the same way all the way through the whole Third Street?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember McKinney, no, the, the bulb-outs are just treatments at the intersections?
No, no, I, I know what they are.
Oh.
I, I'm, I'm trying to see, are they going to go every block all the way down to-
Yes, pretty much. I can't-
But, but the, the thing is, that you guys had a concern. Let me make sure I answer the next question. Do you think it's going to cause a problem with trucks turning the corner and getting on the bulb-outs and ruining them?
Director Smith?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember McKinney, at several of the intersections, we apply what we call turning templates, so you look at the largest possible truck, and ironically, one of those is one of our ladder trucks at the fire department. So we looked at that to make sure that they can make that turn without, you know, running over curb and gutters and so forth, so the answer is yes.
Any other questions, council, go ahead.
Can we have a demonstration before this all goes in? I want to see somebody go around that bulb-out in that truck.
Okay.
Is that in the form of a question?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, can we get, can we get a?
All right, Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. In the lower picture, on the left-hand side, there are some thin black lines, do they indicate parking spaces? And there would be no parking spaces in the rest, because those thin lines are only on the left side of the lower picture.
Mm-hmm.
Are those, those are parking spaces, I presume, marked off? And does that mean no parking spaces anywhere else?
Director Smith?
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, one of the objectives here was to retain as much parking as possible, so this design eliminates very few parking. All of the on-street parking that is critical in the downtown area today will remain after the project's completed, so. But right, right near the intersections, you're still going to lose a few spaces.
Yeah.
But you can see on the aerial photo right there, there's no one parked there anyway.
Yeah, seven foot.
Then let me just ask you the question, you know, these little numbers seem to indicate lane widths, like 13 inches, 13 feet, 16 feet, 16 feet, 13 feet. I don't see any parking there.
Seven foot.
If, if those lanes are that wide, where is the parking?
There's none.
It's, it's along the curb as it is today. The only place that you're going to lose a few spaces is right out those two intersections.
Something here, but not there.
But what does the, for example, on the upper picture, left-hand side, it says the furthest north, whatever, further up lane is, I see 13 feet wide. Does that include parking? That's too small then. I don't understand this at all.
Mr. Tierney?
Mayor and Council, if you take a look at the top portion of the picture, if you're looking at the image that was provided, so this is the Clark Street intersection, there's actually no parking, on-street parking for the whole block on Third Street between Clark and Lewis existing today, regardless of the median. Parking between Clark and Fremont does exist in a few small locations as you go further to the, or as you go further south on the north side. If you look at the, the south, or the southern picture, or the picture on this bottom part of there, so that's the Kearney Street, in that area, you do have on-street parking that's located adjacent to the St. Lawrence O'Toole Building, you will have an elimination of some of that parking located there, near the median. You also have a few on-street parking spaces on the south side there of Third Street across from the St. Lawrence O'Toole Church. However, what you can't see is many of the parking spaces you think may exist do not exist because of the magnitude of driveways that are located in there that prohibit on-street parking. One of the things that Laramie Main Street has done is talked with these businesses that are located in these corners to discuss parking. They find that it's not that big of a deal, what they're losing. And then to finish the parking discussion, there's some limited parking between the Kearney and Custer Block. As you can see, there's a couple, there's a one, let's see, one truck parked there, it looks like. So you would have some elimination of parking closer to the corner there. So the top picture, almost no change in parking, even with the median. On the southern picture, on your, on your document there, some limited parking removal at the corners mostly.
May I follow up? These lines do indicate parking there, these black, little black lines on the, on the left-hand side of the picture?
Lower picture.
Lower picture, there are two black lines on the, on both sides of the street, and I presume they indicate parking.
They're a, they're a lane demarcation where it shows cars could park in there, but if you take a look, you've got a driveway through the middle of one of those-
Yeah.
-on the north side, as well as the majority of the portion on the south side, so what actual parking is missing or not, we'd have to go out and actually measure spaces, but...
Maybe Clauser proposed a bike lane.
So for, I know everybody wants to talk about parking, but again, we have a cooperative agreement specific to medians, so we really can't, we don't have any influence on any of the rest of the design of Third Street tonight, but bulb-outs or parking or any of the rest of it, this is just a cooperative agreement on medians, so I got to rein, rein us back in, or we're never going to get out of here tonight.
Your Honor, I, I object because I think the medians have a great influence of what parking is available or not available.
I, I understand that, and I'm happy to give some flexibility, but-
Thank you.
-we could spend all night talking about Third Street, and we have other things that we need to get to on our agenda. Are there any other questions? All right, are there any comments from the public on this item? All right, any other discussion by council? We've been having some discussion already. Councilor Schuster?
Yes, I, I, they tell me 11 feet's wide enough, and I disagree. You talked about a truck, the inside dimension on a semi trailer is 96 inches plus the walls, so we're looking at close to 100 inches is what's legal there. Now, when we talk about driving a car next to a semi, and we call this traffic calming, uh-uh, not in the least bit is this traffic calming. The other thing that I have a little issue with is the ones we put on Grand, do they look great right now? Are they beautiful when everything's green? Yes, they are. But when we get a really good snowstorm, are they a nice snow fence and put drifts across Grand Avenue? Yes, they do. I, I cannot support this project because narrowing this down to 11 feet and trying to be in a car or a motorcycle or something like that, this is a scary situation. And then I look at the other end where they've went 11 feet and a half inch, like a half inch is going to make a difference. Seven-foot width of a car does not contain a car, especially a pickup with mirrors. It doesn't even come close to containing it. And I realize that there is existing parking, and yes, there's driveways and you can't park there, but I look at this and the parking and everything, and there's, we're going to make a dangerous area. That's what we're doing, is we're making a dangerous area. And bicycles, on Third and Grand, you're allowed to ride on the sidewalk, I talked to a police officer about it. On all other streets, you must be on the asphalt. So I hate to pick on the university, but when you go down Ninth Street, most people are on the sidewalk, and that is not legal.
Councilor Pliegus?
Just to follow, you know, when this first came before us, I was open-minded as far as the, the islands go, and when I look at these measurements, I am very, very uncomfortable. I call them substandard. I, I mean, it's not an ideal situation when you have 11-foot wide roadways, and frankly, there's, there are parking where they do have it, limited-wise, it's, it's compromising too. Six, or seven foot for a six-foot wide car, you better park right, and Councilor Schuster's right, you put a truck in there with wide mirrors and you're hanging into that 12-foot or that 11-foot, or, excuse me, that 12-foot right-of-way, I just think we're trying to squeeze too, it's just too tight for the amount of right-of-way we have, and it makes me very nervous. I, I'll, I'll throw one other thing in there, Grand Avenue, driving down Grand Avenue between Ninth Street and 15th Street, where they allow the parking, that inside lane, try it sometime and see if you're not nervous driving down it, and see if you're not favoring the outside lane, and I think this is what we're getting into here. And I, I just, it, it makes me uncomfortable as far as the design of it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So I think most people know I'm not a fan of medians, and, and I, I have to agree with, with my other counselors here about the potential danger, but I also, the other part is like, this is, you know, Main Street has vetted this, they've looked long and hard at this, they've had discussions. YDOT has vetted this, you know, they're not going to create a dangerous situation intentionally. I mean, so I think, I, well, I think, I think we need to, to go with, I, I'm sorry, but I think we need to take, you know, listen to our friends down at, at Main Street, they've done their homework, YDOT has certainly done their homework, and I will support it, I'm not fond, yeah, and you know I'm not fond of medians, but especially crazy big ones, but that's, I'm going to vote yes.
Other comments? Councilor Shumway?
I, I think sometimes we as city council members think that we can outthink the engineers at YDOT, and I, I'm not of that opinion, so they have determined that this is adequate, I'm going to go with that.
So I will add as a final comment, this is, I want to reiterate, I mean, downtown has been going through and vetting this with door-to-door conversations with businesses, with public meetings for two, three years now, it's been going on for a while, they've been working cooperatively with YDOT. This is down, Laramie Main Street's number one priority, that this is what they're focused on, is these enhancements on Third Street. They have a vision for downtown, and they have a vision for the traffic calming, that's, they have a vision for all of this stuff, and before you vote no, I would really urge that you talk to downtown, and maybe we need to invite them in to have them come renew the vision so that everybody understands where they're going. But for Main Street to commit to fundraising and paying a hu, over $100,000, that should speak to you of how important this is. I mean, this is, I can't stress that enough. So I, I hope that we will support Main Street and throw our support behind YDOT and our city engineers, and Trey Sherwood, and her, and her board, and all the work they have done, and support this, so please do. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Stoner?
Yes.
Yes.
Schuster.
No.
Shumway.
Yes.
Hanson.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney. Polikas.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's six yeses and three noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're gonna take a ten-minute break before we go to item number fourteen. Hey, welcome back, we are going to item number fourteen. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you very much. Title is Original Ordinance Number 1983, Rezoning One Parcel of Land From B1 Limited Business to C2 General Commercial. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1983 on First Reading, Rezoning One Parcel of Land From B1 Limited Business to C2 General Commercial, and set the Second Reading and Public Hearing for June nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second? Second, second by Counselor Stoner. Mr. Tini.
Mayor and counsel, good evening. This is a rezoning request for one parcel of land. This property is located at fourteen oh four Skyline Drive. This is for your, for the older people, and remember skating there, was the old skate place, since then is now carved up into multiple different retail tenants, CrossFit, all sorts of different things within that building today. The applicant is making this rezoning request in order to move their shop into a larger facility. They plan to repurpose the majority of the building into a commercial shop for their H-back company and sheet metal company that they own. The request is to change from B1, which it is currently today, to C2 General Commercial zoning to allow for that use. That use is supported by the comprehensive plan. I do want to point out that it's, wasn't very long ago that this property was still located in the county. In two thousand and ten, it was annexed into the city, and at the time, based upon the desire, so the applicant at that point requested the, I'm gonna say, the lowest-intensity zoning district, which was that B1 zoning district at the time of annexation, for that retail component that they wanted to provide, which was office space and some of the things that you see today. In this area, what you'll note is that areas to the south are still located in Albany County, as well as to the east and to the west. Really, this is kind of a little peninsula that sticks out for this one property. This is a current logical extension of the city, so no real issue there. What I do note is actually that the C2 zoning district is fairly consistent with the other users that are located in that area, with the storage unit complex to the, to the west, as well as to the users that will most likely be located to the north, which is also C2, C2 zoning. You're gonna see a similar type of development pattern occur in this area. Fifteenth Street is really where your demarcation happens. As you go further to the east of Fifteenth Street, you start to see some of that step-down in zoning for probably like B1, B2 uses that would be most logical in their Oasis Gulf, kind of what it's today. And then as you go further to the east, you have some of those residential properties, which is South Eighteenth Street, as well as those properties that are located along Skyline Drive. With all applications for rezoning, you're required to have three readings as well as a public hearing. We do do mailed notice for the Planning Commission meeting, as well as for the City Council meeting that you will have on July, or June nineteenth. Up to this point on this application, we've had no public comments related to this item, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you, there's nobody else. Counselor Hanson, please go first.
Just information, these bars next to it, these are storage units, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I wanted to do.
So my question is, B1 to C2 is a pretty big jump, and can, my first question is, can they do what they need to do by just moving it to B2? Is that a permitted use or a conditional use for the property?
I'd have to double-check.
Okay, maybe that's something we could talk about on second reading?
That'd be fine, I can bring that, yeah.
That would be great. Because my other question is that, to that northeast corner, that's houses and duplexes and multifamily, right? Okay, so that would be my concern, is the uses in the, but I also realize that north of that is C2, so.
Yeah, mayor, mayor and counsel, the area, you know, actually, that's shown on the map, which is the figure that you've been provided, shows R2 zoning. That main corner right there is a large detention area for the, for the subdivision that's along Skyline Drive, and then the houses start literally kind of in that white space there is their backyards, and then there's a cul-de-sac a little bit further to the east, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Tini? Okay, thank you. Do we have an applicant here for this one?
Mayor and counsel, I should point out, the applicant contacted me today, he was called out of town for a work appointment and was unable to attend. He says he should be here for the next meeting, so he'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
Fair enough, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? All right, any discussion by council on this item? Seeing none, City Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries, that moves on to second reading. Item number fifteen, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is Original Ordinance Number 1984, Rezoning One Parcel of Land From B2 Business to DC Downtown Commercial. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1984 on First Reading, Rezoning One Parcel of Land From B2 Business to DC Downtown Commercial, and set Second Reading and a Public Hearing for June nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. Mr. Tini.
Mayor and counsel, this is your, this is also a rezoning request, this is for also just one parcel of land. The request is from B2 zoning to DC Downtown Commercial zoning district. This property is located at three twenty-sixth Street, it's a corner property. If you're familiar with the area, this area is zoned presently today with the west half of the block as DC or Downtown Commercial, and the east half of the block as B2 zoning district. The comprehensive plan recommends that this area conform to the urban or the downtown commercial zoning district, as much of the block really today is already in that form, just has never gone through the actual zoning process to have that. In this block, for familiarity sake, you have a large church on the prop, within this block, a shipping place, a UPS store. You have a house which has been converted in a similar fashion that the applicants are wishing to do into an office building. You have a multifamily, multi-use building that's located at the old Hall and Cleaners site. You also have a theater, or movie theater, or performance theater. You have a large law office located at the other corner, as well as then, so, a couple, a single-family home that's kind of sandwiched in between all those uses, aside from the use or the request of the three twenty-sixth Street by the applicant. Based upon the information the applicant has provided us, the applicant intends to use this building as a law office. The downtown commercial district frankly makes it much easier to accommodate any type of office use or commercial use in a residential structure such as this, because it eliminates the requirements for on-street parking and allows them to actually use the property and more, with more use versus adding parking onto it. It's largely one of the large benefits that you'll see associated with this application. Steph feels that we will probably see other rezoning requests in this area for this other half-block, as well as the block further, or the other side of the street further to the east at some point over time, as some of this area does probably change into this more urban downtown commercial form. As Steph noted with the last application, we do do public notice for the Planning Commission as well as for City Council. During the Planning Commission's public notice, we have provided a public comment. That public comment's attached and is included in your, in your packet. The main concern of the applicant was regarding parking and how parking would be associated with that site. In their letter and in my response to the applicant, I did let them know that they could apply for residential on-street parking, which is within those residential zoning districts that allows for that type of parking. They, they were thankful that they could do that if they so desired, and the, it was indicated after that email that that's pretty much kind of what they wanted to know, so I felt that that was resolved. Aside from that, Steph believes that this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, this makes sense in terms of the downtown commercial zoning district for this area, not only for this lot, but probably in the future, other lots on this block as well. I would be happy to answer any questions. I do know that the applicant has a representative available as well, and could answer questions if you have some for him.
Questions for city staff, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out, you sent me on a wild goose chase, because the analysis on page two, the last sentence reads, "All other land in the area is located within Albany County and is zoned county commercial, which is compatible with the C2 zoning request, and would likely be the future zoning of those properties if they were to be annexed into the city in the future." When I read this and I was looking all over the periphery, I guess that sentence got from, imported from someplace else, and you should probably strike it.
Mayor and counsel, Member Schuster is correct, it was from the last staff report, and that last sentence didn't get deleted in there, so, this is not in the county, this is about as in the middle of the city as you probably can get, so.
I finally figured that out.
Yes, so, and, and so that would be an error, I'll delete that for the next round, just so it doesn't, doesn't create too much more confusion, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Tini? All right, thank you.
We enjoy confusing you.
Yeah, you sure do.
Mr. Polke, you're welcome to come up and share some information, or if there's any questions.
You know, I, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I had read the public comment on that, and their initial concern overestimated the amount of parking that we require. They, one, they put us at a four-member law firm and had us with, you know, a steady stream of clients all day, frankly, I wish that were the case, but we already have an office in a downtown commercial area on Fourth Street, and I'd say, on average, over the course of the day, we'll have one or two clients coming in. I mean, we handle bigger cases, you know, and those meetings don't last very long, and I don't think, in fact, in this place, since we're in a corner, we have twice as much parking, and we've never caused a problem on Fourth Street, so I don't think parking's gonna be a concern, but, and we've always tried to minimize the impact of our office anyway, so, if you have any other questions, it'll be really cool when we're done. Landscape, you know, I mean, that, that building has remained relatively static for the last fifteen years. We'll be doing landscaping and, and at some point, a fence around the area, it'll look, it'll look much nicer than it does right now, so we're looking forward to it, and we'd appreciate your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Polke? All right.
That was easy.
You got away with no questions.
Counsel, Councilman Hanson, we'd be more than happy to put a bike lane in front of it.
Thank you, thank you. Point yourself this way.
Councilman Gabriel's known me long enough to know that that's an important issue for me as well, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? All right, any discussion by council on this item? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, the motion carries, that moves on to second reading. Thank you very much, Mr. Polke, for your patience this evening. All right, move on to item number sixteen, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I'm almost there. I move that council approve Original Ordinance Number 1982, amending Title V of Laramie Municipal Code five point oh nine point oh one oh, definitions five point oh nine point three five zero, malt beverage permits for special events, five point oh nine point three five five, catering permits for special events, five point oh eight hundred, point eight hundred, point system for alcoholic beverage, license violations and suspensions on third and final reading, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, counsel, this is your third and final reading of the alcohol ordinance that you've been discussing for a while now. I don't have anything to add to it, but would gladly take any questions that you have.
Questions for the city clerk on this item?
Yeah, I got one.
Counselor Schuster.
Would you like to see it pass?
I would love to see it pass. That would be wonderful, counselor.
I think you'd love to see it go away.
Well, then let's ask another question, will it work?
If it passes, it will work wonderfully, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor and Counselor Hanson, yes, sorry.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, is there any discussion by council on this item? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, that passes. All right, let's move on to item number seventeen, public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items tonight? Okay, seeing none, move on to item number eighteen, consideration of future council work session topics.
Vice Mayor. So on our current list, it says alcohol-related concerns in the city of Laramie. That will include the point system? Yes?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's.
Look at the attorney.
City Attorney.
Mayor and counsel, would you like it to?
Thank you, thank you. And when are we, I know it's hard to nail some stuff down, but.
That is currently in discussion with the city managers.
Okay.
Last time before she left, we had discussed a little bit of trying to kind of narrow down what we were talking about and figure out how we wanted to do it, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think the intention is soon. Counselor Polikas.
I realize at some point in time, we're gonna discuss the overall towing policy within the community. Specifically, I'd like to see something happen. I'd like to see.
City Attorney.
No, specifically, I, I think it's very frustrating for, for some of the counselors that, that people have the ability to take advantage of the system we have in place now and, and do what I, what I consider price gouging, and I think we ought to have the, I think we ought to have a work session as to what, what ramifications, what repercussions or what we can do to prevent that from happening, perhaps in some fashion.
City Attorney.
Here's what I've been up to. Let's see if you want me to continue down this road. I was trying to actually bring something before you in the meeting on the nineteenth, I don't think I can do that, it would be the one following, but here, here's my assessment, this saves me a long email. The last time this came in before council was a highway patrol kind of system, where by administrative policy, they accept rate sheets, and if those rate sheets are in, within the realm of reason, then they'd be put on the rotation. And if they violated their rate sheets, they'd be taken off the rotation, or something would happen. That was not, that was not acceptable to council. So there's three other things we could do, only two of the other things I think are feasible. The one that's not feasible for money reasons is we buy our own tow truck. We don't have the money to do that. The other two are setting rates for tow companies. Other cities have done that, and I, that's what I've been investigating, and talking to Cheyenne, Casper, Jackson, because they set rates for their non-consensual toes. That's the direction I've been headed, been heading, because the other, finally, the, the other way we could go is with a single or I suppose two-company contract. You know, you put it out for RFP or RFQ or whatever you call it, and somebody bids, and that's the price. So I've been heading down the setting prices. And if you want me to, if we need a work session, I'm happy to do that, but if... bids and that's the price. So I've been heading down the setting prices. And if you want me to, if we need a work session, I'm happy to do that. But if you want me to continue down that path and bring that to you with the information of what other communities do, I'm happy to do that.
I withdraw my request.
Okay. All right, Counsel Schuster, we can't get into a discussion about towing.
No, no. I would like a request, a situation. One of the worst things on towing is ending up with an abandoned car. I want to know if we could investigate of being able to send an abandoned car to a recycling facility because one of the dreadedest nightmares on everything is having a vehicle you can't do anything with because you can't find the owner or anything else because they took the plates and left town. So I'd like to see, I don't know if it's by state statute or whatever, but we need the ability, be able to take an abandoned car and recycle it after so many days.
If I may, Mayor, I've not looked at that for a while, but that is largely a matter of state statute with abandoned cars. It's incredibly complicated. So I will reacquaint myself with that, but this would not be part of this non-consensual.
One would help the other, though.
Yeah.
Counsel Schuster, can we start out? Because I know a lot of this has some state jurisdiction and county clerk auto title issues and all kinds of stuff. Would it be acceptable to have the city attorney kind of research it and send you back out, send us back out, just kind of a synopsis so we can see if there's really anything that we can talk about or if it's really blocked up in the state statute? Would that be all right?
It's funny that our neighboring state, Colorado, it takes less than half the time to be able to recycle an abandoned car compared to the state of Wyoming and they're not having the problem with the issue we're having. And that's one thing that's really disappointing, knowing several of these tow companies here.
Any other requests? So I have one to throw out there. So it's kind of come up a few times in the last four or five months for different reasons, but I would like to put a review of our economic development fund policy on the work session list. It's not. We talked about it when we did a loan for a business.
Isn't that it?
No, that's, those are service agreements, Laramie Main Street. But we have a separate economic development fund, the one that we loaned money to that business. We talked a little bit about it during budget, but I don't think we got into the discussion that we wanted to have about it. So do I have some support to put that on the list?
I think that'd be good.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else?
From you.
All right. Counselor Hanson, number 19, please.
I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations. This refers to Wyoming Paragraph 16 dash, dash four, dash 405A, Roman number seven.